Before we take roll call to make sure that everybody has their phones on silent, please. Thank you. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Everybody join me for a pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Your council report, December 29th, 2021 through January 13th, 2022. The Board of Alderman Public Hearing Meeting Minutes, January 3rd, 2022. The Board of Alderman Hearing Meeting Minutes, January 3rd, 2022. And December 21st, the legislature's report. The Proposition 8 Statement of Accounts for Quarter 2021. Anyone have any questions or corrections?
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda as printed. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Crown.
Aye.
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 Before we are gonna deal, let's switch up here tonight before we start with the ordinances. We have a presentation that we didn't get to do earlier in the year because we didn't have the plaque in. The St. Clair Junior High and High School Art Clubs are being recognized with the traveling trophy this year in recognition of their star performance. There's been an annual trophy that's based off the winner per year. The play with their name on it has been added to the other two recipients who have won in previous years since the start of this. The art club will get to keep the trophy on display for the year. As years our clubs do have painted businesses, business windows around town during Christmas to help brighten the holiday spirit. We wanted to recognize them for their hard work and great artwork that so many of us have seen on the windows that they painted throughout town. Including the winter theme painting they did on City Hall's doors, which you would have seen on the weekend tonight. We thank them for the support and beautification of our town and look forward to seeing what they do next year. We have yet to have someone in two years' row, so who knows? They may hold onto the trophy in a re-year, but we'll have to wait until next year to see. We want to thank Amanda Butenhoff, the art teacher, for starting this program and doing it with the students.
Yeah, you guys go on this side as well. Come closer. You can come right here too. So can Neil right here or right there? Aubrey, come on over here. Neil, right there.
On the ordinances and resolutions. We have Bill Number 2022-02. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the St. Clair R-13 School District regarding school resource officers.
Ross. To bring you up, in case you haven't been aware of all these has occurred. Officer James Wells, Sergeant. Has been assigned to the R-13 School District for some time. And the R-13 School District wants to bring him on as their Chief of Security for the school. And as such, he would retire from the Police Department of the city. He would continue as a reserve officer with 16 hours of service required each month. Maintain that status. We would do away with part of the portion of the SRO program where the school paid 90% of its salary and the city paid 10%. He would become a school district employee, totally under their supervision, other than when he was acting as a reserve officer. So that left us with an agreement that needed to be redone. And we still have Officer Pat, who is assigned as an SRO officer at the school. So we met with Lieutenant Cruz. We worked out the conditions that if his continuing in that role. And basically, there's no financial change in that agreement. But we are, there's a few changes in his duties, like people no longer need it for summer school. So we'll be able to use it for a controlled degree in the summer. So basically, we have to rewrite that agreement, and that's what we're doing tonight, is another agreement. Eliminating James Wells from the, from the SRO. And continue with Officer Pat as an SRO. And James Wells will continue to be the officer.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions about this ordinance?
First thing for our spirit tonight. We appreciate the city and police department's cooperation over the years and the SRO program. As you said, for all of this, Officer Wells had chosen to retire. While he had been very long in the whole of the school for the tremendous asset of your department, our school was here. And with Officer Pat in line job as SRO, we're happy to vote that. It's actually a, a little bit of a win for the city that you'll never have 10% for Officer Wells who paid that on your budget. And you'll have an extra month of work in the city for Officer Pat. So it's a win for all of us and appreciate your, our, and the others. If you want to ask any questions?
Thanks, Doctor Cruz.
I don't see how this is a win for the city. The school was given an SRO officer for 50% of the pay that they keep in reporting for the year. We also have to pay when we do basketball games, football games, soccer games, volleyball games. What else is here?
This is, oh, sorry, this is not a change. It is.
I understand, it's still not a win for the city. The taxpayers are footing the bill for the school. The taxpayers are the power to the bill for the school.
I would kind of argue that, you know, as a police chief, chief of detectives before. When we go, the biggest population concentration we have in eighteen, that made me police certain is the school. And if you as a police officer have to respond there without an SRO program and go in there blindly with nobody familiar with the school, when you're totally dependent on being able to locate staff at school to respond to the crisis situation. So in Union, we, we put a, ended up putting an SRO officer in every school building in the city all the time because we believed that it was that important to protect the children. And to have somebody that knew those buildings, set up those escape routes, set up those procedures for the staff and the police officers responding. So I think it is still a win for the community, even though it isn't.
Well, I'm not talking about St. Clair. I agree that there should be more. Now, you mentioned Union put one in every school. Did the school pay all of it?
Not, not enough every day, we had, we had similar agreements to this.
Again. The school is coming out of here on this. But we were only paying 10% out of Officer Wells. No, we will get that for the entire summer because Officer Wells, his entire life at the school will do, um, will take care of summer school. But he also needs to be a reserve, so he'll be able to do that on his air. He'll still teach there. But those hours will apply just like basketball games, football games, things of that nature, correct? So that will be on his reserve time. But in exchange for him, um, being the summer school officer, we will have that to cover, you know, to cover his load. And for those three months that we have them, worth then 50% of the yearly salary is now 25% for Officer Pat. He's a 50, that's the same way it was. That part is a change, I know, and it should. If we, if we turn this down tonight, then the school could force either drop an SRO officer or come back to their negotiating table and give the city the money that they're due for this officer.
You know, the police services in general is not a game for the city. You're never gonna make it by them tickets, collect that fines. So police services in general are not a cost effective, I guess, sort of lack of better means of. You're never gonna, you're never gonna get a return on your investment, other than from the safety of the community. So I would think the way to vote on this is how important you feel the safety of the community is impacted by this agreement. You know, I've been around law enforcement for a long time before SRAs were available. And I responded to schools with minor incidents and felt like I was lost when I walked in the building. I had to find staff to get me to the center of the crisis. And I think, Chief can speak to this, Lieutenant, better than I can, but I think when you go to school now, you pretty much have a good idea of where you're going, what you're gonna address, and there's already somebody there. And the school events are the same thing. You got a basketball game going on, or a football game going on, or other events. There's a large group of people gathered in a very small density, or high density in a small area. And again, the advantage is that you already have processes in place with it. Chief of security going forward and with an SRO that you've had in the past. I don't, I don't know how to answer it any better than that, other than this is, has been something that the community's invested in in the past, where it's being invested in at the same level, pretty much going forward. And I would not give them any direction to negotiate it on a different term prior to meeting with Dr. Cruz and Warden and Chief Warden having agreed to.
From what I understand, if the school set the term. They, they pretty much set the term, and if they feel that the safety of the children isn't as important as what we do. Let them throw, show them about their bill and they're approving.
They, they set the original term. These terms are very similar. In fact, they're maybe a little more favorable on the city's side than the original agreement. But all I can say is that this is the agreement that we're presenting tonight. I feel comfortable and recommend approval of it, Chief, and everything. I have a recommendation or whatever.
I'm not happy about losing the officer, okay? Because that's taking, that's taking manpower from my department. Right? The not going with what they had for Officer Wells does not allow the city to provide me with another officer. Those are my issues with this whole situation. I will say, and I've already told this to Dr. Cruz before, I wish I'd have known before that this was going to happen. Because then I could have made some type of budgetary recommendations to the board on my budget to add an additional officer, knowing that Officer Wells, or Sergeant Wells was under fire. But I didn't know until after our budget process was already done. Not by any fault of the school district, not by any fault of the city. That this is the plan that they come up with and this is what they did. But the bottom line is, yes, I am losing an officer. So that's my concern with the whole thing. And that's what's gonna be my concern from now, too many years into the future, about the staffing of the stuff I told you about.
So Chief, that was gonna be my question to you. I know that Officer Wells has been a SRO for a while. How many hours does he work outside the school, like on our streets, as a regular officer?
There's been times that he's filled in on traffic ramps on weekends. He did that quite extensively last summer, wasn't he? Last summer, summer four.
So these part, this part-time 16 hours that he's gonna be in reserve? Will that 16 hours cover his reserve time, or his officer, like road officer time?
That's minimum. 16 hours minimum is what policy says. And then, you know, that's how.
He would need work grants and Walker, right?
Yeah, the only way he'll be able to work grants is under the policy we have with MoDOT as well as traffic safety. That reserve officers can do it for $17 a hour. Uh, he can come out and do that. That would also count for 16 hours.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, losing Officer Wells, does it leave your department staggering to find coverage? Or are you?
Not staggering, no, but here's the deal, okay? We lost the city administrator, and we hustled to get that filled out. We lose a person from the water department, we hustle to fill that position. Same way with parks department and all that stuff. Okay? Which, you gotta fill those positions, I get that. But I am going to say, and I'm gonna say it from now on, that the staffing of the St. Clair Police Department is short. It's low, it needs to be filled. Can we do the job that we've been doing? Yes. But you all saw my final year in the end report. You see what the officers are doing. You know, it's in black and white.
Regarding. Regarding the situation before, staffing something as an interim city administrator, I haven't had a chance to put it in. Sounds like it's been an issue. But I really don't see going forward James Wells.
Is this gonna make or break us?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
No, that's not, it's not gonna make or break.
Minimal.
No, but this is my opportunity to get out and say, here it is, this is what we had. If we were able to come to a better agreement with, instead of 50-50 or a different number, that may have helped the city financially, helped me get another officer. But that is my take on the whole thing. I agree 110% with the SRO program. I want an SRO up there. I even asked Dr. Cruz point blank, do they still want the SRO program? And he assured me, yes, they do. So there is no conflict or issue, problem there.
Chief, I have to do a question, it's asked when we were on the phone, when I asked you against the work interview. Are you 100% happy with this contract?
I'm 85% happy with the contract.
I do think, I mean, I love the SRO program. I think it's a great asset to our schools and our kids. I think it's a service that we can provide to the schools. And I want to see that continue. I think the agreement is, is okay. I, my biggest thing is, is I hate to see the police department take a hit when they know they're already so short-staffed. Really, for me, you know, we were already paying 50-50 for pet. So that is not a budget change. I just hate to see them almost take a step backward when I don't really feel like, having looked at the number, I don't feel there's any way to replace that officer at this point. Overall, I think the agreement is good because I want to see the SRO program go forward. I think it's mutually beneficial for our other officers and for the schools. And, you know, like Administrator Ross said, that's one of our biggest places where we can serve the community. It's one of the biggest gathering places that we as a community have, and it's one of our greatest assets. It's our worst protecting, so I want to see it move forward.
For one, oh, go ahead. Yeah, I just wanted to correct about the administration position. The SRO program, like several years ago, the 50-50 grant was always in place when I arrived and had it for some time. A couple of years ago, I decided a second person would be appropriate. And I wanted Officer Wells to have built, to have actually decided, so it was great at that time. Agreed to sponsor Officer Wells, and I think 90% of his pay package. But Officer Wells retired, we want to keep him on our campus because he's a senior, not a person. Now, we're actually planning to pay 100% of foster employee and district employee. We are very much appreciative of that. Our request would simply revert back to what we did prior to the second SRO going in place. There was certainly no attempt to short-staff the police department. And we're happy to help house again with that SRO plan, which we're back to there.
I really like Art's recommendation of paying 25% versus 50% in hopes that that will create some money in your budget, Chief, too. I don't, I don't think there's any reason why we can't go back to the drawing board and see if we can come to better terms.
For the city, it's not the school's responsibility to staff our police department. I mean, they're doing the regular program that they had. You know, Officer Wells was only 10%. But again, that does give us pet to cover that summer fine. And we've, we've had a very lengthy meeting, and we thought it seemed very, very clear.
I like. Officer Wells is retiring. Right, and getting a different job. It could have been any other officer retiring, and we wouldn't have had a heads up about that.
But we, we also realized that any other officer we would have to replace.
Right, and he'll have to be replaced. That's something we need to discuss in the near future. So I think as far as the school's concerned, that this agreement has already been made, we just haven't voted on it. But I think that our officer is a different topic.
I, I think we're talking about, actually, two different things. We're talking about inadequate staffing in the police department, which should be addressed in the brush theory. Analysis, meaning that they got that, how many officers we needed, were properly staffed or were understaffed, which I think the feeling is that we said we're understaffed. And find out what that level of staffing is. We'll say this officer retiring going forward for the police department, and this officer remaining in his current position. Really isn't gonna address that one way or the other. But I think the agreement is a fair agreement, something that's been in place for a while. I do think the conversation is started now is if the police department, if I understand, how do we assess that going forward? And that really is.
And as far, as far as I'm concerned with what happens tonight. Right. I have no problem with the agreement that we have in. I'm not completely happy with it, no. But I'm not gonna be completely happy with anything unless, you know, who's not gonna be completely happy if I get 100% of something instead of 50% of it? Okay? I was asked what my feelings are regarding this contract. I'm 85% happy with it. And it's of no fault of the school, it's no fault of the city. It's just a situation that we are in right now. You want one extra officer? Yes, I do. I want extra officers to patrol the streets of St. Clair. There you have it, okay? But as far as this getting passed tonight, we still want the SRO program. We need the SRO program. We have to have the SRO program. And here's the deal, if you've read the contract, both sides have 30 days. If we're not happy with something in 30 days, if he's not happy with something, if I'm not happy with something, we go to our respective corners, hey, we're not happy, and vote for 30 days then. And then we go from there.
Let's go further on what I, what I, what I want, or what I think the city needs, not what I want. The school gets a police officer for three quarters of a year. They should pay 75% of his salary. And I know it, I know it's, it's been this way for a while. A local bread used to cost 80 cents in 1978, 8 cents in 1968, but that's not what it is now. So they pay 75%, we pay the 25%. They pay when their, their police officer is at a football game or a basketball game. You shouldn't have to pay for that. Now, it's negotiable. It's negotiable. Let him go back to the table. Let him throw their, their intelligent heads together and come out and come up and experiment with it. I want the SRO program too. I want to keep the 10%. So let the school pay for it. They don't have a problem with, they have to turn on the football field, spend a thousand, a thousand dollars there. So let them do what's right and pay the city for what they can use of.
Just to make sure that I'm 100% clear. Pat would be employed full-time with the school, well, as an SRO officer. Like, it's the August through May. And then he would be off for the summer to work for our police department.
And break, but there's, there's.
Okay, so the, so when we talk about.
Always an employee of the city.
I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong term.
Because for nine months of the year, under this agreement, he's assigned to the school.
Right.
Three months of the year, he's assigned duties that the command structure of the city of St. Clair.
But he does often have work after school, or does it, I've seen him before, I think, doing road work after school session. Does he still, does he do that normally or just occasionally?
Yeah, but it's not something that I.
Not.
I know.
What I, my question now is, this has been discussed for a long time. Why are we just not getting what we need to discuss with people?
I didn't see the contract until Friday.
The contract was, myself, Mr. Ross, the mayor, and Dr. Cruz did the contract. What I brought to you during the, was regarding the retirement of Officer Wells and that we were going to have to renegotiate everything to get things back to where it is.
We're trying to get something.
No.
Question, question, please, just a second.
Right, I know, but.
I'm gonna make a motion to introduce Bill Number 2022-02 for first and second reading by title only. Bill Number 2022-02. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for St. Clair R-13 School District for an agreement regarding school resource officer. The second reading of Bill Number 2022-02. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for St. Clair R-13 School District for an agreement regarding school resource officer. I'm going to approve Bill Number 2022-02 as read.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Crown.
Aye.
Alderman Hahn.
Aye.
Alderman Count.
Aye.
Alderman, fine.
Aye.
In the case of time, the mayor is elected to break the tie. We can go a day or a night.
I was a Nelson Williams there so long, so I have to say.
I'd like your vote. Do you have a feeling Bill Number 2022-02, you vote to or against?
Please, I'm voting 20. I have two. The next bill, 2022-03. An ordinance to execute a contract for the sale of.
In order to execute a contract for the sale of property located at two eighty Hutter Street, Kevin Arwin. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Williams is, um, building a new, I guess, company facility in the same block this property was located. The city purchased it, it's basically the only thing going on right now, so that's what we discussed from the original building. He was, he wishes to incorporate that into his building process, basically take that whole block there. Um, we're also working with the one for the stormwater redirection, uh, issues down there. So, this, we would be selling him the property at the same price we purchased it for, sixty-five hundred dollars.
Any questions come out? I'll answer them.
I just have one, I want a clarification on, um, I know when we, um, bought the, bought the property, we paid closing costs and the, is the buyer going to pay the closing costs this time also? I hope this is my question.
Yeah, I guess he would pay those closing costs that are customized to the buyer.
Okay. I didn't know this, I'm verifying.
It's the same contract that we use to buy it, so it's the exact same contract. And normally, you decide to pay their traditional costs.
Okay. I can't remember how that worked last time.
You didn't pay them all, they didn't pay them all, and you guys split them. Um, and it should be the same way this time. You'll pay title insurance once a year. Um, you'll pay the F D B for it, you'll have to pay the F D B here, and you'll each pay to rent the room or the closing office. But it's the same contract that we use.
Unless something has changed in the cost of those things, then it should be, it should be losing money.
You should be, the adjustments to closing costs are on page four. But you're basically gonna be on the other side of the deal. You're now gonna be in a moral society position, that they were the seller, but now you're the seller. The title insurance will come on the moral cost if you pay the price, the title insurance. And, um, according to the means, if you paid them before, they'll not pay you before.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Bill number twenty-two dash O three.
Bill number twenty-two dash O three. In order to authorize the director of the mayor of the city of St. Clair to execute a contract for the sale of property located at two eighty Hutter Street, Kevin Arwin was the second. Second reading of Bill number twenty-two dash O three. In order to authorize and directing the mayor of the city of St. Clair to execute a contract for the sale of property located at two eighty Hutter Street, Kevin Arwin was the second.
Before this, you already kind of clarified, I said, all of the side of this game, correct? The buyer's paying all of the title company charges for the closing. And you guys paid all of last time you bought. This time, the buyer is paying all of it.
I thought.
Exact same provisions in the contract, so you're not gonna have any kind of, like, all the closing.
I'm with Bill number twenty-two dash O three. As red.
Red. Roll call, please.
Alvin, Alvin. Alvin, Alvin. Alvin, do you mind?
Aye.
Alvin, count.
Aye. Next is Bill number twenty-two dash O four. In order to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for professional cleaning services with F K I Cleaning.
I guess Kim discovered last month that our cleaning contract for City Hall and Community Center and other areas where we needed, I expired December thirty-first. But when I found out that was gonna happen, we didn't have time to redo it. I contacted the I M A to continue for one month at the same rate as before. I prepared a request or proposal, sent it out. They and one other company applied. The other company's base price was thirty-six hundred and something dollars per month. And I actually don't have a board that's sitting in front of me. Uh, but this is about a twenty-dollar increase from what we have. Uh, it's twelve hundred and some dollars, uh, for.
Twelve-ten.
Twelve hundred and ten dollars per month, uh, to continue cleaning at the same rate and levels that they were before. So, I think it's a pretty reasonable contract when they're advertising it more than double.
I'd like, I'd like to introduce Bill number twenty-two dash zero, um, zero-four for first and second reading by title only.
First reading, Bill number twenty-two dash O four. In order to authorize the mayor of the corporation of St. Clair Missouri to enter into an agreement for professional services with F K I Cleaning. Second reading of Bill number twenty-two dash O four. In order to authorize the mayor of the corporation of St. Clair Missouri to enter into an agreement for professional services with F K I Cleaning.
I'm going to approve Bill number twenty-two dash zero-four as red.
Mayor, roll call, please.
Alvin, Alvin. Sorry, Alvin, do you mind?
Aye.
Alvin, count.
Aye.
Alvin, count.
Aye. Bill number twenty-two dash O five. In order to amend in chapter two, Article eight, section two dash one thirteen of the code ordinances regarding residency requirement for qualifications for city administrators.
The reason, this is being, uh, proposed for two reasons. One, when we began the selection process, the finalists we have, we replied, only one was willing to, or was able to move to the city immediately for the requirement of our ordinance. And that person was not our finalist. Um, all the other candidates had something going on in their life where they were not gonna be able to relocate to St. Clair. The second reason is finalists that we, that the committee chose and is recommending tonight as a situation, a family situation requires him to remain in, uh, currently, his current residence for a period of time till his circumstances for the family ages later. So, in order to present him with a recommendation, we need to first change the ordinance allowing the city to hire somebody that isn't going to reside in the city. So, that's the reason for the first one.
But, but this, is there any other position that the elected position, in the city, it requires us?
Not that I know of.
The administrator of the whole position, those ordinance cover? Doesn't need to cover anybody else?
No, no, this, this one specifically isn't in the qualifications of the city. This whole section, I don't believe, I believe it is.